Okay, let's call the Rondo Plain Course Order being 702, November 29th, Melver Delray School. Let's have a roll call first.
Roger Moore.
Bob Coon.
John McHenry.
Greg Coquelin.
Ted Ridgeway Plainer.
Can I bring this point to the board?
Tonight on the agenda, we had approval of minutes of October 11th and November 8th. If not being a quorum present or a majority present of those attending that meeting, we'll defer both of those meeting minutes to our next meeting. We'll review new applications. We have a timber harvesting request. We move on to land use ordinance revisions. We have both farm retail in our downtown business district one and assignment to continue that area. We'll have a planner to report and then I'll open it up for public comment. We tend to try to involve the public as we go through. If the board is in deliberation, however, I'll ask you not interrupt the board at that time here. So, we've hit the approval of minutes. First item is no application, Cannon lot timber harvesting condition, use that application. Proposed timber harvesting up to 60% of the basal volume of the existing tree stand on a 44 acre parcel. Parts of this parcel are also within the shoreline zone. The board is going to go through all of the documents. According to our rules at A15B1C, we can approve conditional use application for greater than 40% if recommended on their forest management plan by main forest service in response to disease insect infestation, weather-related mortality, or other natural causes. I'm going to ask Ted to give us, if I missed anything, to bring that up at this point and why I'm the applicant or are you the applicant or?
I'm the applicant.
Please do.
I'll be right back.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll give a summary of the applicant's position to address some issues tonight. William Cannon is the owner of a 44 acre parcel of forestlands located on the south side of Curtis Road and is asking to, is asked of the board to conduct timber harvesting activities. As you know, that's a use that's up to 40% of basal area cut. That's a use that's permitted by the code enforcement officer. In this particular case, the applicant is asking for in excess of 40%, 40%. And he's asking for around 60% of basal area cut. As the chairman noted in our zoning warrants, 60%, anything over 40% corresponds to any probable conditional use of application, which the applicant has tendered that application as submitted from what I could tell is complete application. The applicant has shown that, has stated basically, you'll see the report in the application form as well as right title and interest of the property, that the site has not been logged in a long time and that because of dense conditions in there and prevalence of coniferous vegetation, that it's fairly densely covered and there's very little understory and very little regenerative growth that's occurring. I contacted the main forest service to go out and take a look with them, learn a little bit more, remember how to do basal area calculations. I thought about the prism, which is new technology for me to tell you how long it's been since I was back at school. But we went out and did an evaluation with Ken, Kenfield, the main forest service who was our district forester. And we went out and took a look, just basically look at the, examine the windrow, windrow conditions out there, what the basal conditions were, the relative accuracy of the calculations that were given to you in that report, and to look at the land in terms of its justification for that 60% cut. What I found was that basically, well, we found, I should say, was that we do have very dense vegetative growth in there. I didn't see as much of oak as the forester had shown, but I did cover all the ground as he had. There is practically no understory at all. There's very little regenerative growth. What I found is spruce, which is probably not a desirable species from what I can see that your client wants to get. There was a little concern that, you know, there wasn't a lot of pine either. There's not a lot of log pine out there either. So imagine that you're cutting also to try to increase that, the growth of pine out there.
Yeah, there's not a lot of stems, but a lot of coarse breaker because the pine that's there is pretty good size, so it ends up quick for a tree.
Okay. Right. But it's sporadic. There's not huge stands of it.
No, really not.
No stand. And we noted that the ground is pretty wet. It's very humky in there. It's not a surprise where in the cannon bunker, river quarter, we've got a lot of, we've got very high water tables, everybody knows, out in that area. This little land is very, very soft, a lot of spagnum moss in the ground up there and stuff like that, but not a lot of regenerative growth. Some red maple. I didn't see a beech. David tells me there's a lot now, but I really don't think there are. But it would appear that, that there really is a justification to open the forest up to allow for a better standard of vegetation in there. I saw a lot of also red spruce and a lot of frankly speaking junk red maples that were in there. And that cutting it hard will in fact enable it to regenerate. Whereas right now, there's nothing coming after that, the standards existing. On top of that, there's also, there's not a lot of good, a lot of good wood in there, so I'd imagine you have to cut hard to make it economically feasible as well.
Yeah, and with the stuff that we would want to leave in that 40% to leave would be the stuff, the stuff that's not, not subject to windrow as that, but hemlock can stand pretty good. The oak, you know, a lot of the oak that is there should stand pretty good. You can maybe remove half of that, but with all the oak trees there. And, but most of the spruce should come out because spruce is pretty highly prone to windrow. If you just go and kind of cut part of it, the rest of it's going to blow down. So we take, I've cut about six cords per acre. The total of cords per acre we had came out to 35. I did a zigzag cruise, took a floss and advanced through our inventory program and got up to 35 cords per acre, which is pretty high. And a lot of that was white pine, four of that's hemlock, six of that is spread spruce, seven red maple, four red oak, one beech, one poplar, one white birch, and one sugar maple. So this is smattering of a few other hardwood species, but the red maple, a lot of that was, should come out, although red maple does stand up well. If we have some decent size, you know, whole size that looks like it will grow, okay, we can leave those. A lot of the pine should come out. It's big, it's old. And like I said, most of the spruce should come out because that's kind of what we leave would blow over. The hemlock, we could remove part of that, but that would, that would make a good lean tree for, just to keep a forest there for kind of a shade tree for the regenerative come back. So if you remove all the hemlock, then we'll be talking more. If you down to like an 80% removal, then you'd really be talking more like a clear cut. And we don't really want to get into that situation. We just want to get it good, open it up good, get the stuff out that's going to blow over, the old stuff, and get it removed, but not cut it so high that you can see all the way to the river, you know, you don't want to do that either. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. Probably.
Okay. Just a couple of other things we noted, and one thing that you and I didn't talk about because I popped it up, it was a little, because my code enforcement officer brought up the point that, that the floodplain down there is a little bigger than the 100 feet you and I were talking about.
Yeah.
And I popped that up on the GIS, downloaded from OGIS and found out that it's much wider. It's about 300 feet from the upper edge of the river's edge, yeah. Now, that doesn't necessarily preclude, you know, that you can't cut in there. It's just saying the 100, the 100 foot, or the 75 foot and 100 foot that you had addressed still applies, but the area beyond that, that's within the resource protection district, is subject to the same 40% cut unless you can justify that it's justified.
There was no reason we cut any more than that zone than the rest of the law. We could stick to the 40% of that part. I mean, that's not, for that, what I looked, I actually laid that lineup and really only on the southern end of the lot was I even able to get within 100 feet of the river before I hit a bank, I went down.
Yeah.
So I backed up and then the further north I went, that plane actually came in quite a ways and I just kept following the edge of that around. So I was, I was a long way back to where the hemlock's done. So I can show you.
I think, I think the contour is on it. I have a couple of maps in the back. Did you look at that? Think I gave you?
I'm not, I don't think, but I've got the newest map of my newest layout there. That's probably, that's about where this con, upper con floor, bow's way back, that's where my line ended up. I was, I tried to stay on the high dry ground and I was pushed way back up in there. I was, in that area, I was nowhere near the road. So that floodplain zone that you see on there, I was actually further back than that when I was putting my line.
Okay, so where that, where that looks like it's 80 foot contour is. 80, 20, actually, you're at this, you're between 80 and 75 foot. Kind of wavers in and out, and you've got that, that draw down there at the 80 line. You can see where that comes across.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. I think you were, you see where the floodplain doesn't even make it all the way into that swale.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't even down in there. There's a little bit of a low land up in there that I went way up around, up under that. So I was, I started out, well, actually probably about 150 feet from the river down low, and then by the time I got up there, I was pulled way, way in, into the lot. So I don't, I don't think I'm even, if I have to adjust it, I will. I'd like to stay right out of that floodplain zone and avoid any of that.
Looks like it's a mess.
One more level of permitting, but we're just a few, we end up with a few trees basically out of the, you know, one or two trying to do that.
Okay. Okay. And you see the other wetlands in here. These, these wetlands are, there's a illustrious shrub swamp that's shown up along the road. I don't see this shrub swamp. I saw red spruce.
It was wood, that was.
That was wooded.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a shrub swamp. There's some alders in there, but not much.
No.
So I don't think that really, that's really going to make any difference.
Well.
Yeah. So in all, in all, the question of the board is, you know, we have, have those issues on, in terms of the cut and the fear, if he stays out of the shoreline zone area, which indicated that he will, you know, the only question for the board is, actually two at this point. One is 60% cut, the board wants, you know, feels there's justification for that. And I think the other concern that we're going to find is that basically extrication of all the product. Curtis Road, as you know, is a private road. It's been built with private monies by various residents owned by all the residents there. The concern that we're going to have is how the logging trucks are going to affect the surface of that road and what kind of assurances, are we going to need some sort of assurance that the road will be prepared to be damaged?
As we left it, yeah. The only, what we do, we wouldn't stage the equipment in the road. We would basically cut an off-road landing and back the trucks in so that all the equipment is working on the land and not in the road.
Right.
That way we're not tearing the road up. And this lot kind of lends itself to either a dry summer cut or a winter cut when the road will be either frozen or very dry. So it's not, it's not a loss that we want to cut very wet, a wet time of year when we potentially damage the road, so.
Go ahead, John.
I have a question on that. Curtis Road, as we know, is a private road, but I'm under the impression that this is a landowner of, on the Curtis Road, is this landowner not park owner of the road?
He's part owner of the road, yeah.
So what is the issue?
Well, the issue is.
The town is uncharted. You know, the town is out of this as far as I can see. If he's park owner and it's a private road, it's not our concern.
Well, part of it is the town, right?
The town part of it, yes, but that wouldn't be any different from any other road than any other logging operation that takes place.
Well, I guess our only concern is that I think we're going to hear from the, the property owners that the land should be maintained in its, in its current condition.
Oh, yeah, but that's their issue because it's their road. Right. That's a good point.
Well, we're going to approve use on somebody else's road. I agree with you, John, but I.
It's his road.
I still, yeah, on that portion, but on, on the town road, there should be something that makes sure that it stays in at least its current condition.
Yeah, what we would do in any situation like that where there's a lot of traffic, there would have to be some assurance that the road is not damaged. Is the town portion there paved or is it also protected?
It's also paved, yeah.
I mean, you know, obviously we have to have, we can't sustain any damage, but I don't think, we should go out of our way just because this is a private road. It's no different than any other road in town and any other logging operation that would take place in town.
Right. My first question was whether the road was paved or gravelled. I got the answer that is gravelled. Second thing is I just want to clarify with you is you said that you're going to leave the road as you left it. I take it you meant leave the road as you found it.
I mean, yeah, before we get.
We'll see where it is right now.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify. There's a big difference.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. So we deal with it a lot, you know, going through, going by other landowners and.
So it's gravelled road.
We have large rates and greater things that we do kind of follow along behind our job and clean it up.
Yeah, I just want to be sure about your comment about within the shoreline zone and where it kind of extends another one. There is no different one, there's no difference in the procedure and the approval, but there are some other standards that you have to follow if you do cut within that shoreline area. Sometimes it's 100 feet, sometimes it's 250 feet, in all instances you can, even on your trails getting stuff out, it can't be visible all the way to the river, so they have to move. So if I understood you correctly, you are not going to be doing any cut within the shoreline.
No, but I, it sounded like it went to another level of permitting. You said, at one point I thought, maybe it was, who's the code enforcement?
Jim.
Maybe he even mentioned that if you cut in the zone, in the shoreline zone, it had to be approved by a little DEP or something like that, so.
We have to provide the notification from this board if we approve more than 40%. So that's why, that's why you're here. But that applies to anywhere in town that is affected by a shoreline zone. And that's why I want to be very clear because when we provide our notification, we should be very clear that there was no proposed cutting whatsoever within the shoreline zone.
That's, that's my intention. The only question I have now is the, the way this floodplain is, is it 100 feet back from the edge of that floodplain?
No, it's the floodplain itself.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm all set.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that, yeah, then I'm not going, I'm not pulling the shoreline.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just, I know Mr. Beckhuisen makes.
Yeah, no, I know. I was going to open up the vote.
But I just also want to bring out one other point. What Mr. Light is talking about is the, is the statewide state of shoreline zoning, timber harvesting, these things, that if you recall when we redid our shoreline zoning in the chapter 1000 back in 2010, we put in that, basically the sunset clause, that our regulations within our ability to regulate and our regulations pertaining to timber harvesting in the shoreline zone would terminate at such time that the DEP took over all permitting and enforcement of timber harvesting within the shoreline zone. And that was, that was the threshold level that was based on the number of towns that completed the shoreline zoning ordinance revisions. And what that has been achieved, as thresholds were achieved, and Mr. Light is referring to, is that as of January 1st, 2013, those statewide regulations go into effect and the town basically articates its enforcement and regulatory powers of timber harvesting in the shoreline zone to the DEP. And that's what I think Jim was referring to, that you might, if you were working in the shoreline zone and boom, suddenly you're working there after January 1st, now it's something that would have to do with DEP.
Oh.
That's what I think it was warning you about.
Okay.
But I guess it wasn't made clear.
Okay.
But that would not escape our need now, at the time of an approval, to make our notification to the DEP about a project that is involving shoreline zone.
Correct.
But within our findings effect, we should be very clear that there is no proposed cutting within that.
Right.
Yeah, the line of concrete ground is stop line.
I'm going to let Dana talk for a moment because he got his hand up first earlier. So Dana.
Okay. Just let me kind of review the whole road issue so you are aware of what the road issue is. The Curtis Road itself is about two and a half mile long. About a mile coming from Brimstone or Irving Row again has passage either through town road or through a right-of-way that was negotiated between Stone and Pelletier to the Valanga Place. Okay, so about a mile, there's a mile and a half left beyond that that is private road owned by landowners. We all own to the middle of the road. Nobody, and Bill Cannon has a, I'm going to say roughly 1,000 feet probably on the road.
Yes.
Somewhere around that.
Yeah.
And he owns to the middle of the road, okay? Before you get to Bill's property, there were at least four landowners that owned that road. So it's private property. We do not have any rights of passage. We have never been able to come to any kind of a road maintenance agreement or anything other than a passage over. And we, and on this end, as you know, there's a gate, so they'll have to come in from the other end. So there's trespassing over a lot of property, you know, to get, I trespass every day to get to my property, okay? I have nothing or anything other than handshake and I maintain the road. So that's, so they let me travel those sections of the road that I have no legal right to travel over. So the issue, the issue is that the town is going to authorize, okay, this, they're going to have to get, just what we have had to do with CMP as well as the DAP people and everything else, rights to use that road because there's a whole bunch of landowners that are supporting landowners on that road over there. And the town has always kind of encouraged anybody who wants to use that road for utility road to deal with the landowners. And that's just the precedent that's always been set. There's nothing that's changed to do that apart if you are involved, like if you're all encouraged utilities, so make sure you check the landowners to use that, to use the Curtis Road. Just so you know.
The gate that you're talking about, Curtis Lot, they not have, can you do that?
There's only one person that has access from the down road to Curtis to American Jones. Because he has a heel to the back block, he has a, he has a right-of-way on that section. Other than that, it's closed off everybody. Nobody else has access.
I would like to, she's the board, ask for some letter of guarantee that the road will be repaired. As I know, there's been a boatload of money just dumped on that Curtis Road recently. And if it gets damaged and for whatever reason, the folks that damaged it do not repair it and they go away, all these private owners are going to come to the town and the town is going to tell them it's a private road, you go deal with whoever you're dealing with, we can't help you. But I think a letter of guarantee with monetary points on it would be prudent in this case.
No, what they're talking of, and I don't, you've seen the Curtis Road, there are too many, it's all clay. There are just not too many times when it's, when it is drying up or frozen. We like the winter because it's frozen. Other than that, it's a pretty messy road, no matter where you are.
Well, that throws me a little bit of a curveball there that there's no right-of-way. Because I think that I got, I got, we have to talk with Bill, because I was, I'm seeing that he had a right-of-way in there and that, so we thought that was all set.
The right-of-way is on my side of the road from, from the middle of the road to my side of the road.
Okay.
It's a deed of right-of-way. And I travel on, half on Bill's and he has, and he travels on half on mine.
And then what other property would he have to pass over to get the product out?
Jim Jones, Charlie Jones, Steve Pelletier, Ticky, Ken.
Land Jones.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I think I down over the hill, down the hill, Valanga.
You say Steve Pelletier?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's going to be a complicated agreement.
Yeah. Quite honestly, I wish a lot, but would the devil be able to come up with any, would anybody look up with any kind of word, anything that passes over? And that's, that's too bad because it sounds like a horrible crime.
Question. So there's, you had this legally researched amongst you yourselves, I would imagine?
Oh, yeah.
And there's no implied, because it's an abandoned road, the property owners don't have an implicit right to pass over that road?
Thousands of dollars crying the same thing, making three or four decisions and said, no, doesn't count.
Really?
Yeah.
Has that been since the York decision in 2000?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. No, that then will have to be a, well, that's changed, but I don't know. I mean, we just, we just all.
Well, is the primary concern of all of the individual owners that the road is maintained in good condition or is it, is there a concern with traffic as well?
I'll try to say this as nice as I can. Some of us, it's about maintaining roads, others, if there's an opportunity to cash out.
It's going to be a difficult.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I was unaware of this.
Yeah, I was going to say, so the right title of interest in getting this stuff out is in question.
Well, his right title of interest in that.
On the property where the cut is, and his portion will get it out correct.
There's no other way out.
But that's, if your composter come to, with Ron Kucher at the end, who owns the gate.
Yeah.
If he would take the gate and let you down, he don't have to deal with Jimmy Jones and Nick, which is totally different with Jimmy and myself. The question, well, if Kucher would let you down.
What's his name?
Ron Kucher.
And then where does that go out to?
That's this end of the Curtis Road.
That's the downing road.
Not the downing. Comes out on.
Okay. That's the road that essentially curls the surface of the water.
So I don't have to deal with him if we come up with a, is that, is that possible in your opinion?
Not a lot with you. Maybe Paul will.
Well, if I could deal with him and six other people, I don't, I don't, six other people probably wouldn't happen, but one.
I don't, it just wouldn't happen. It's too bad. It's too bad. I want to know. I'd also like your opinion on guarantee, but I know there's going to be table, it's going to have to come back. I mean, it's going to have to at some point make sure that there's a way to get this stuff out.
I don't know that we'd have to table it. I don't see why we can't. I, I don't see why we can't approve the harvest conditional on a document of some type that allows passage. And that document would be, have to be negotiated between whoever, you know, whichever owners are involved and whatever compensation that, that they want to work into the document. You know, as long as we have that document that says there is a, a right of passage and that the owners are satisfied with whatever agreements they have, I think we're okay. I, I don't see why we can't approve the harvest.
Well, really, the harvest can be approved, but there's the whole issue of traffic. Remember, this is a conditionally used and we have to say that you've got adequate egress point from the side.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, condition upon an agreement with the.
Or they're gonna have to provide us with that, that, before we can approve that.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't approve that, that section until they, they provide adequate evidence that they can get this stuff out. It's like a helicopter walking. Okay, but I don't think there's a lot of product that you want to list out.
We don't have that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, if it helps, I mean, we've, we, I don't really wanna do this, but we've brought, we've, we've put up bonds before. And, but I don't know who would hold the bond if we got six, seven different people. There is no road association, I mean, we've done this with road associations before where you get a number of camp owners and we're, we're cutting the back lot. We put up a bond for the road and as long as the road's in the same shape, you know, before we came, when we're done, we get, we get the bond back and everybody's happy and, but that wouldn't really work here because you've got.
Well, it would if you're only going over to one person.
Yeah.
And it's still.
Or just pay him a, you know.
Kind of one person, it's still a few of that one person.
Well, the other way, I, I would imagine if, if the owners are agreeable and the town is agreeable, the town could hold the bond. But that's another complication that would have to be negotiated.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would rather.
That's a private property.
Well, it would have to.
Unfortunately, owners.
Sorry.
Would, would we require some sort of apron coming up?
It's the only guarantee we can, we can give.
On some way.
Well, I mean, yeah, we can look at that, but I, I think at this point in time, I'm not sure I would, I would hit them with that for, what, four week operation maybe?
Yeah, four, four week starts, yeah, there's some candles.
And then require that for more protection, okay, so I'm not sure, I don't feel.
It was an ongoing excavation.
Yeah. So I don't feel comfortable.
Phil, final comment?
Yeah. If, if the town would hold the bond, uh, would there be any chance that some of those landowners, would that give a few of them the opportunity to come and try to suck the town into doing work on that private road like they've tried to do in the past?
That's, that's, yeah, that was why I didn't want to bring up the bond because sometimes, oh, you, you ran over, you dented this culvert and it's like, come on, you know, you know, sometimes they will hang on, hang on to the bond for, you know, we really didn't do anything to the road to it. So that's kind of why I didn't want to bring up, but if it's a deal breaker, then you'd have to do something like that, but I would, I would actually rather talk with the guy with the gate and you, I'm only dealing with two people and pay a, you know, sometimes we do a per cord thing or just pay a one lump sum fee, you know, use, use the gate and then everybody's happy, you know, agreeable to that and, you know, simpler is better on, on, on these jobs. But I don't know.
Does anybody on the board, any of these other sections, are you concerned about it all? I mean, it looks like a good project, I think you laid out a good summary of why it has to be done. And I think there's a couple of mechanic whole things that need to be done, I just, I can move forward.
I have a problem.
No, but.
Ted, you wanna take five?
I, I just wanted to address Phil's comment because I think it's more, it's a, an answer to your question. And I think in this situation, although I'm still trying to figure out how we would have a justification to require it, it'd be no, no different than requiring a road bond on a subdivision or a private way. Just because we own the bond to ensure that the work that's approved by the planning board is completed doesn't mean we necessarily have responsibility for, for maintaining or, or accepting that road. So I don't think it would, in this situation where the town would suddenly be caught, you know, with a bond for Curtis Road, Curtis Road residents demand that the town take the road since they have, have a bond to, to repair or whatever, I, I think, I think we'd be able, we'd feel safe about escaping.
And the, and the wording ought to be pretty specific once you get with an individual from its point to its point.
It's been my experience with the bonds that I've done, I had to do on projects that should the person put up the bond or the company that put up the bond fail to do the work, the bond holder is responsible to get the work done by other means.
Who doesn't prove it, remember?
So that, that in turn would involve the town, if the town didn't want to hold, I, I would, the town should hold.
I don't think the selectmen would support that.
Probably not, although. And I understand your concern, although, quite frankly, I, I, we have, we have some attorneys who'd said, yeah, we'll just take the money and they're not responsible for doing that. You're still, you're still in an ADK land use violation, but.
This bond would be more of a performance guarantee.
It's a performance guarantee, that's all it is.
That is what it is.
But I mean, the, the, what, what Phil's saying is, is true, it's usually what happens is the town will take the money and, you know, hire somebody to finish the job. And, well, we've, we've come close to being able to do that, dodge that bullet.
But then if, if he were able to negotiate, travel over, I'm gonna say, two properties on, on that road as the toll of to take one or two people, why is a bond needed? I mean, whatever his agreement is with that, I mean, we should not hold that, everything.
I think that's what they would.
Then his, there are recourses, course.
Yeah.
It's just a performance assurance.
That's just a.
That's what I'm saying. Frankly, I'm, I'm not sure where we have performance assurance or unconditional uses of it right now, so.
Can I just give you a good example? Phil just finished roughly a thousand feet.
Yeah.
According to Curtis Road connect, from the path to, through the woods to Jimmy Jones, Phil just rebuilt that road on, and towns up there. And that road was over the muckiest, grubbiest, you know, with field fabric and the whole nine yards. I was telling Ted today, who were initially, that, that's about ten years, we used to park our cars out in the field and walk over half a mile to get to our vehicles every day because the road was so bad as to, to have turned out to be here. Now we have a road, okay? I don't want to have foot damage and I'm sure we could come to some agreement, but it's not just me.
Did anybody else, President, have a comment about this?
Make one final comment, please, sir. I certainly am not against this company doing the timber harvesting. Not at all, I'm concerned with the money that's been spent on the road going away and, and concerned about the town getting pulled into some kind of a problem over there. The timber harvesting sparseness concern should go.
Uh, I got a question, if, for some, if we could go south and go out through the gate, are, are we only crossing you and this guy before we get to a town road? Is Ron sure?
And so you've got the down road, Kuchar owns half of the road, I'd be owns the southern half of the road, eight hundred feet. That, that, that would be sharing, I think you could deal with, that, on the other half of the road. Then Jim Jones owns half the road and he knows a lot of agreements in there too, which they, they would work with it. And I own basically the other fifteen hundred feet of road on opposite side, I'll, I'll live at the hill.
So there's about five people?
Yeah, there's probably.
How good is the road, I mean, is it, could we use it in the wintertime?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I could, you'll never go that ten years ago, so that's, that's a road.
Well, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather do this, the way they're looking, they do this in the wear, when things are frozen up and you won't even know anything happened rather than trying to do it. I mean, in the summer, it rains in the summertime too, so, you know, we could get, get in there and have trouble in the summer, so.
Is there a period of time that's needed for him to come back? Sometimes we want the application to explain, just want to make sure you're gonna be a cop.
No, that's subdivision, that happens, not a party condition.
Okay.
So basically, both of them, we got some road problems, I, I asked you.
Yeah, you have, actually you have a right title of interest to the road problem. Oh, I think you have a road problem, you have a problem with the access.
Yeah, okay.
And I appreciate, I'm sorry about this, I was not even aware.
Well, it's okay.
Like everybody else, we're not an abandoned road, but still retains rights to pass over that road, even though it's an abandoned timber road.
Unfortunately, if you look back to nineteen fifty-four law, when the town was, when they first abandoned that road, we'd all own to the middle of the road.
Right.
Until then, in nineteen sixty, whatever, there was laws were changed and that encouraged the, the, the tail farm out. So our, on our end of the road, all reverse on the nineteen fifty law law. We have no right to pass over each other's property. Unless it's deed, and we, on our side, Evan owned all of that town and he deeded all of us on the north side a right of way, but it's only about half the road.
So you get a, yeah. Yeah. All right, well, this is. Do we need to do the site visit, know that, or is that?
Yeah, that, does the board want to do a site visit, it's not required, it's.
You have already done one, right, with the staff and with the forest service?
Yes, I have.
On it? We don't really know what we're looking at anyway.
Well, the issue would be the public hearing and I would say that we can schedule a public hearing as soon as he gets, the access issue resolved, so you can, so you can, what is that, that's nine H three or something, about reasonable access, saving reasonable access for the site. He gets that done, we can do the public hearing and, and move on this. Hopefully, you get this done before you wanna cut. Well, yeah.
It'll be frozen tomorrow.
Sometimes these are, these are many months, even years in the making, so.
I have one question, if he's gonna come in here and, and go out towards the, towards the Curtis Road, up towards Stones that way, if he does any damage, he is gonna repair it, is that correct, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause you're gonna be coming in there with some pretty heavy loads. There is a culvert in there that you could dent, you just said, well, that isn't a big deal. If you were out there, that would be a big deal if you did damage that culvert.
I bet, like, if you bent the end of it and not, you know, I'm not talking about, if we run over, crash a culvert or whatever.
We do anything.
Yeah.
That true?
Yes, that's true.
So the road will be as good when you leave it as it is now?
Yes.
Okay.
All done? Okay, well, thank you, I wish we could have, well, this is our conclusion, but I think we have some good information. Just keep.
Okay.
We'll get that back with Ted.
All right, I'll keep working on it. There you go.
Okay, we're gonna go to land use ordinance revision, first item up is the farm retail operation discussion. And final decision is on creation of the farm retail.
Well, we, we have kind of held off on that because we wanted to get more input from more of the board members. So I think we have a different subset of board members.
We do, we have, we have, we have John, so that's, that's great, that's terrific, so. And I had a good talk with one of the, one of the comprehensive plan board members about this very subject. She was very positive about the idea. Essentially, what we're talking about here is, it's eight years, that's right.
Okay.
You probably have more notes in your mind.
I have a bunch of jokes, that's for sure.
What we're talking about.
Shrikan, discussions that went on before, there was some consideration being prevented, setbacks and the rest of that. Everybody seemed to be pretty favorable, seemed to be, we seemed very well.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, but the other input was that you were running for.
Well, no, the reason, the reason we put off the decision is the board felt unfavorable. That it, it should have some more eyes on it, we didn't have a big deal when we possessed it. And so we wanted to just be sure that everyone was comfortable with it. And I do actually have a question on that, on that proposal. Because I, I don't think it solves the full problem, as I recall, but we still depend upon the farm retail definition, right? I don't believe we've changed that. And that definition would still not permit the primary use to allow the non, non, a product that isn't produced on site to be sold as a primary use, it has to be a secondary use. And in this case, that would end up being the primary use.
It was kind of a mix, right, they're using something.
Well, some of it, yes, but most of the products would not be the product that was made on site. And most of it would be the product that was manufactured somewhere else, not manufactured on site. So the way I read that, it would be, it would, the primary use would produce, would sell a product not produced on the site, even though it's associated with a product that is produced on the site. So I think there's a, still a problem with that definition.
How would you want to see that definition reconfigured?
Well, if, if we want to accommodate operations like the one that is before, so that brought up the situation, I, I think we need to allow for products to be sold as, I don't even know how to put it. You know, you, it's sort of, you've got a, a problem both ways. If you allow products that are sold but not produced on the site, simply related to the site, then we have an issue. If I sell one tree to a pulp mill, I should be able to set up a paper store and I should be able to, you know, do a staples. So that's the one extreme. On this, the other extreme is if you're raising a particular animal and then you take some of that animal product and have it processed and it comes back for sale in larger quantities and not necessarily your own product, is that okay as your primary use? You know, so you either allow it or you don't allow it. If you allow it, you've got a problem, if you don't allow it, you've got a problem, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. I'm not sure how to solve that.
Well, we can become arbitrary and appreciative and put it to discretion of the board. It is a conditional use. If it was a conditional use, you would have to put the board, if they need the standard, however, however undefined it is.
But how?
There's a certain level you're never gonna be able to define.
But on one basis, what criteria would the board make that decision? Just if they happen to like it, that's not a very good criteria.
No. Or defensible.
That is right, but what is that? Because if we can. That is right, but what is that? Because if we can come up with defensible criteria, then we ought to be able to write it as part of the definition.
Well, I mean, we should take a, a reductive approach to this and say, what don't we want to?
Oh, let's not get into that.
Well, eliminate the problem.
Yes.
Easier to tell what you don't want. I think you gave the, the extreme, which someone might push, yes, I've, I've cut, I harvested part of the land and now I want to put in the paper supply. Sure.
Yeah, but, I mean, the whole intent, the whole intent is that it's an ongoing, it's, first it's existing, then it's unexisting. It's an ongoing operation. It is, it is in essence forming agricultural, et cetera. I mean, all of that exists. The guy that raised it one tree and then wants to put in a big behind, to me, there's a big disconnect there.
Just a point I want to make is we have two different subjects that we're talking about. One is allowing farm retail in our own zone. And the other one is how to define the farm retail to what we need. Would it be more prudent of us to work on one at a time? And say, work on whether we're going to approve farm retail in an hour one? And then we can go back and read it and, and look at the definition of that. I think it would be easier than trying to marry the two together.
I guess I made an assumption reading through the other stuff that we, that, that I believe said five acres or, or something that we were.
There was, there was no vote or approval on it. It was.
Yeah, but everybody was kind of in consensus with that bigger blah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree with Greg's approach, except that I would feel like we have to reverse it.
Right.
Because we have to, before we approve a use, we have to know what the use is.
I stated one over the other, but either order works for me. Yeah, we might as well just attack the farm retail definition. I thought we did last time, but let's attack it again.
Well.
And, and nail this down.
We looked at it, but as it reads now, I don't think it would allow for the use that we're considering. Because it's not the primary. And that's the key.
I, I think one way that, and the way to put it into words is, is somebody with farm retail was saying that, you know, they have to have more than five acres and they have to have so much furniture on it. And you bring up the point of somebody sells one tree to a paper mill and they want to sell paper. Well, I don't think it's the, the same situation. They have enough trees on the property probably to sell their all. And it's, would be a short-lived phenomenon anyways because they'd be cutting trees down all the time. This is a case where a small farmer has a small herd and there's no viable way for her to sell her product without being launched to a cooperative. So can the cooperative be an angle or bringing this in? Can we look at, you know, somebody who belongs to a cooperative as the product of that cooperative being their product? I don't think you would find too many cooperatives for people selling one tree to get hope.
Well, the one tree was obviously an exaggeration.
Well, I understand, but I'm, I'm just trying to use that to.
A load of pulp a year and, and if you have enough land, you could go for many, many years. So, you know, if you, if you want to consider a cooperative, it's, it's an interesting angle. But then are we, are we talking about a formal cooperative or informal cooperative? This has to be some sort of an organization and do we get into what kind of a structure is it? How large? What is a cooperative?
Can, can we ask this, Drew, to explain a cooperative to it?
But that's, I think we still have to keep in mind that we're really not tailoring this for one particular.
No, we don't, but I think we have somebody in the audience who has experience with a cooperative. Maybe she can give us insight into how that cooperative works.
I, the point I guess I'm trying to make is.
Well, I don't want to argue about it.
No, but if you, but if you say cooperative, it's easy to say, but let's get back to the, to the staples.
But you're neglecting it before we even hear what it is.
What hers is, is one thing, but what it is, is not defined. A cooperative could be anything you make it.
Okay.
Mr. Coon?
Yeah, let's.
Could you make a decision on it?
I enjoy it, yeah. Let's go back to how farm retail is. Written up in the proposed page nineteen, I'll be putting out page nineteen. So a farm retail operation, the view to the future was it's going to be a permanent structure. You got, you got the size limitation from yesterday. Used to store, display and sell agricultural and animal husbandry products produced on the site and other lands farmed by the principal owner. So what we're looking at in this case is exactly what is written in that first sentence plus products that are made from things that are shipped and then manufactured. Is that correct?
Right.
All of the other uses, the, the wreaths, the hand implements, supplies, all of those are seasonal. All of the rest would be secondary to, to these two things. It's either grown, raised, made, produced right there on the site or it is, part of it is raised, grown, manufactured on site or sent away to be configured. Where you have the problem, and I think I do too, is you send off a little and you get back a whole bunch of like items, how to define that. But I think, I think there's probably right after that, a sentence that should be able to adequately describe that.
I hope they're just going to be that easy. Let's get away from the trees and the paper stores. Let's, let's talk about keeping a few hens and producing some eggs and being able to set up a, a shop that sells, you know, pastries and, and anything made with eggs.
But they can do it, they could do that.
As your primary use.
If they. Will you keep, will you keep referring to this primary use? Where is that?
Well, the second.
I think he's getting there because the fact is the last sentence says, non-owner owners produces are permitted as secondary.
Right.
And seasonal use.
Yeah, but that's, that, all of those things, the pies, all of that kind of stuff is secondary to, to what they're doing. Because it's seasonal, it's only part of the time. The raising, the raising of the animals, that's a, that's a year-round operating. It's secondary, it's secondary seasonal.
No, 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 the products that are sold, this is what I'm getting at. The products that are sold, according to our definition, have to be either directly produced there or if they are not directly produced there, secondary to what is directly produced there. So in smaller volume or smaller gross or however you do that.
I'd say, I, I don't, I don't believe that's exactly true. What it, what it says is prepared package with baked goods, handicrafts, Christmas trees, wreaths, agricultural hand implements and supplies manufactured by non-owner producers are permitted as secondary and seasonal uses, right? So they're permitted.
As secondary, right. They can't be the primary use.
Okay.
But in this case, the primary use would be the primary.
I, I think what we need to do is eradicate the second. Keep that, that second sentence, but we're not discussing the second sentence. We're discussing the first sentence. Because the, the, the thing that was originally discussed was we had talked about that, we had a little bit more of a definition there that stated that products that, that products that weren't made entirely from, from, exclusively from the, from the, the animals or in this case, you know, the, geez, I can't even remember how to put that, but. We have to basically put in there the disclaimer that we had before that stated, that we discussed before, but we didn't finalize. Was that basically the, the owner could in fact sell products in which their, some of their product was used in. But not entirely.
The way, it was, it was under special use. And the way we had done it is the planning board may permit, may permit farm retailers to sell finished products made from their materials, even if these goods are not produced from the exact materials produced by the retail farmer. But that still does not address this primary or secondary aspect of it. If we're allowing that, you know, and if we don't care about this primary or secondary, if we're going to allow that, then you're in the situation of, you know, the, the tree and the staples or the hen and the.
I, why? I guess one question would be, why would you do that if, if what happens is, you know, we're really, actually, special uses in five is really almost a special, it's almost a special exception. It's stating, here's the real, here's the reality. You're going to sell corn, you, you, you've got a farm, you're going to produce product there. And you can sell your carrots, your cabbages and so forth. And you can also sell pies on the side and Christmas trees when the season comes and you can have some jams and other things that come and go as the season goes, but you're primarily selling and produce. Now, if you're producing wool, and we say, we don't, we don't say paper. We say if you're producing wool from various animals, the planning board, if you're engaged in that, the planning board can in fact permit you to do, to sell product that is made from that wool, whether or not it really contains your wool or not, your batch of your wool. Because as, as Ms. Drew had explained to us, as, and I think as any animal husbandry person would tell us, that it all goes in a big batch somewhere. And how much of that sock containing your wool cannot be determined if you're a small producer. And there's no way that we, we should, there's no way we can enforce it. There's no way we can do that. So all we can do is, we would have to have a special consideration of and consider.